Oh yeah. Yeah, yes.
It's all gonna sit right here, right?
Counsel.
Hello.
Yeah.
Johnny Paul, we need to have us 25 pass.
John.
Yes.
25 pass six.
25 pass.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh.
You want the earpiece?
Yeah.
I think that, you know, I mean, that I'm asking the dancers.
Why can't you see the light is on?
Yes, sir. If we make start, yes.
One, you know, be doing it with plenty of work, like, issues like the phone and all the level that issues itself. So, my issues are, that's one. Second is that I think this is giving kind of room for successions, you know, maybe so. We're not practical, so maybe then we can just take all of that and then, yeah, do a real thing again for experience. Build up that, that, you know, it can also bring a, yeah, you know, it's what it is. It's your effect, your breathing.
Hi, how are you? Did you hear Paul?
Me?
Maybe the chat.
Yes, yes.
Oh, my God.
We wanna follow the cruise. It's like a little magic cage.
Oh, that's a big part of the city.
Yeah.
Who's, uh, who's later?
Johnny Ray.
Ah.
It's a big thing. This is, it's so, I don't know. Now, I think it's too professional and all these tools. Okay, but ten, everybody now, now, two face the moon, I mean, like the rest of my house, crazy. Everybody else is two.
I'm going to take this. I'll be back, back, make watches, see, make a lot of floor, and I'm there, and I'm there.
A bunch of people ended up going back down to the world than after it.
Counsel, now he's coming here soon. Uh, chief. Chief, uh, our friend is here, chief.
Uh, chief?
Oh, okay. I was here.
Good to see you. Thanks for showing up, man.
Hi, good to see you.
Yep, it is.
Come on in, we'll have a seat, sit down, let me just go. Right here?
No, up there.
You get the front row.
Oh, I get to sit with the chief.
That's special.
I don't like being late.
This guy, I would attract you all when he plays, right?
When he's like, and those, like, passing session. He might, like, he has that energy about, there are ways to, they just come by. Because, because of that.
That is my one. So, the San, San Jose, you deal with San Jose, right? I think what happened, he is. Oh, I saw you. The director, I'm mad at the record. How are you?
Good, I'm fine.
It took you a seat.
I'm just saying, support, you know.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. I gotta pick my check right now.
Ah, that's what happens? Oh, my God. Come on, I thought. Great, bless. I was wondering what happened, it's like. I was just going, oh, my God.
Can we start and then John can join us? You know, 'cause the chief been waiting.
Let me just call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, this is a Public Safety Subcommittee City Council meeting. The meeting is just about to start, right around 5:40. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chairman, Chairman Lee?
Here.
Counsel Lehe, Counsel Malonazo. Here, two present.
Thank you, Counsel Malonazo and Counsel Lehe is gonna join us in a few minutes. But I thank the chief for his indulgent waiting. The agenda for tonight's meeting is on LPD Gang Unit Task Force. This task force, my understanding is that a collaboration among the chief office and other law enforcement, as well as the social service agency, some of whom are here tonight. The council Subcommittee on Public Safety would be very much interested in hearing from the chief an overview of what the Gang Unit Task Force involve and who some of the partners, and then have you do the overview and then turn to the partner, and if the partner can have a few minute, I mean, you know, giving their synopsis of how it's like being a partner of the Lowell Police Department Gang Unit Task Force, and then we can, counsel can ask a question. Mr. Clerk, Counsel Lehe is here. Chief, go ahead.
Okay, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. It's very important to me, this relationship that we have with various agencies in the city. Lowell is very, very fortunate to have, especially the Shannan grin. I mean, to receive that kind of funds and be able to use those funds not only for the enforcement end, but also on the partnership end. This year, we received in the area of $581,000 from the state that we can use to partner with our partners like the Lowell Boys Club, Lowell Community Health, the West End Gym, UTEC, of course, who's here with us tonight, the Career Center, who's also here with us tonight, the YMCA, the CMMA, and also Lowell High School Career Center. And these funds are also used for the Lowell Police Student Police Academy, which has been a big hit, as you all know, for many years. You know, we recognized early on that trying to keep people busy, keep them involved in things is the positive way to go here. We're not gonna arrest our way out of this situation, and it gives us a great opportunity to be able to meet the young people in this city and to show them, as I spoke last time I was here, that we are not the enemy. I do not want them to think that, want them to judge our officers on the actions of others, offices of other departments across this country. I think that, you know, we can go back to Enterprise Bank again. We've talked about that during these meetings. That was a tough afternoon, but I think a lot of restraint was shown that day. And I think that overall, the people came back and had a very positive opinion of the Lowell Police that afternoon. I was very proud of the officers for the restraint that they used. And, you know, we still work towards a solution on that through the court system, through, you know, criminal procedure system, Criminal Justice Reform Act, and try to basically, you know, get these kids back in line and understand that they can't be acting as they were on the street. I know that UTEC has been a partner for us for, with many, many years and has helped us during many incidents, and we meet probably every month. Every month we meet, they come to my office, we have a meeting, we sit down, and we talk about what's current and what's going on in the city. going on in the city and what we can do to help them and vice versa to keep the kids in the city safe. And that is the goal. I don't know if people from UTEC, if you want to maybe touch on that relationship, tell us a little bit about how you think it's working and you just have to press the button on the mic and you can.
I did not know that.
Steve, for the weekend also.
Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, good evening, counselor, and I thank you, chief. We definitely got a great relationship, you know, with the chief. Chief has been a big supporter for UTEC for many years and, you know, and like to thank you for all that great collaboration, you know, I think without your collaboration and our work is not going to be that easy, you know what I mean? But thank you and much love and appreciation. And as a UTEC in general, you know, we're, it's an agency that would help young adult, you know, male and female and from the age from seventeen up to twenty-five, you know, and who disengage and who's proven risk, you know, who's been involved with the system, who have been there and kind of out of luck, you know, and then as our agency, we actually build relationship with them and connecting resources through our agency, meaning starting with the street workers department, you know, build relationship out there on the street and we do reentry meeting to go to jail and we do outreach, home visit, all that and built relationship is all about that keys. And at UTEC, we have, you know, our education phase and for the UTECs, for our three model is, one is to reduce recidivism, you know, and the other one is increase education and the other one, unemployment. So there's two increase and one reduce, you know, and recidivism, that's, I'm glad to reduce that because we've built that relationship. Anything happen in the city, you know, we're out there and police department, they're doing their parts and we're just doing our job after to build relationship if anything happen, see if they, you know, anything they need our service and stuff like that and it's a key for us, you know. And this past incident, I know the chief want to talk about that, you know, and we're out there supporting, you know what I mean? And we also have a video that UTEC, when there's something happen, super like violence and all that sort of stuff, but UTEC respond that violence is not normal and we gather our teams, you know, together and we also made a video and thank you, chief, that actually put on your website too. It's actually twelve point key, now maybe fifteen point case out there, view and that we definitely sent out the message out there, you know.
So that video is one minute video?
Yes.
Now, it's on our city, the Lowell Police.
Yeah, it's a message, yes, counselor. It's a message out there, you know, that violence is not normal, you know what I mean? And we don't, and we don't want that to retaliate because if that retaliate, that cycle's never going to end, that peace is never going to end. But if you're going to stop that and as a street worker, as a UTEC, we're going to slash that and we're going to beat up that cycle, violence is not normal and we're going to be in there, we're going to intervene and we're going to spread some love with the seed of peace, you know. Sometime it take chip away, sometime it take process time, but we're not going to give up, we can continue.
No, I thought the video was, at first, when I first heard about it, I'm like, okay, but you're right, the kids out there today, with the social media, they watch it all day long. So, you know, I thought it was a good way to get to a lot of people, obviously there's been a lot of, a lot of hits on that.
Yeah.
And, you know, anything that we can try that will work and have an effect is we want to do so, I give you a lot of credit for that. I don't know if you have any questions about the video or?
So, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is good information and thank you for being here to share it with us. How do you deal with the, I don't know if peer pressure is the right word, as much, I hate to use the word gang pressure, but how do you deal with the pressure that some of these young people, especially seventeen, eighteen years old, find themselves in, in trying to break away from an element that you're trying to, you know, to keep them away from? I mean, how do, how do you go about doing that, dealing with the peer pressure, especially for young people in the sixteen, seventeen age group?
At that age, you know, from that age area is that's where the big peer pressure is at, where the pressures is really hard. And as a street worker, you know, we are the peacemaker, we're out there, we continue relentless, we're not going to give up, it's not going to be the first time and it's going, that magic's working. Everything start with that relationship building, you know. It just from one, all right, Jimmy, I'm going to take you out to go eat, you know, and what do you need, you know what I mean? I know you're in this kind of, this circle, you know what I mean? That maybe it's negative to other, but you think it's positive, but may I change your mind around, like, you know, you can do something else better.
Now, you mentioned, you mentioned house visits, would house visits enter into that type of?
Yes, we do home visit and, you know, wherever they're at, you know what I mean, crisis and anything that could have just called, like, Mal, me and my girlfriend just had a fight, I just need somebody to talk, that is the key, right there, relationship that, all right, this is where I'm going to talk to them, you know what I mean? And food is the best, take him out to eat, he love it.
Right.
And, you know, once you get there, yeah, and then we just plan to see the peace, like, you know what, we got a job at UTEC, education too, come through UTEC, you know, drop in and we take him out.
That's great.
And it vary to different, you know what I mean, not everybody's the same.
Yeah.
You know, so it's all key, it's to relationship building.
Thank you.
I want to recognize Madam City Managers, Ali Nani, who's is also in the room and also Counselor Rodney Elliot was here, he went to the courtroom to put the code in his lockers, he should be back in just a minute. Chief, you want anything to add to it? You have anything else to add to it?
I think that, you know, like I said earlier, UTEC is a big help for us, but you also have the Career Center here with us tonight.
Right.
And I don't have the exact numbers, but the, part of the things we talk about all the time is keeping these young kids busy and, you know, try to find them work or something useful to do and so I know that the Gang Unit has also formed a relationship with the Career Center and I appreciate you being here tonight. I don't know if you can touch on a little bit of exactly the numbers that we've sent over there.
Heather, if you can state your name, please.
Sure, Heather Donovan from the Mass higher Lowell Career Center. I supervise the Young Adult Department programs there. Thank you for having me here today, thank you for inviting me. So, our Career Center, the Young Adult Department services fourteen to twenty-four year olds. We have a Pathways to Professions program that focuses on out of school young people so you can come to the Career Center and get your HISA or GED at the Career Center location. We have our own instructor. You can also enter an occupational training program, so a skills gain program, and then we have a variety of work-based learning programs for any ability. We really range the spectrum. We also use the Shannon Grant funding in the summer to employ approximately fifty-five young people for about a hundred and fifty hours in the summer. So it's twenty-five hours a week and then we provide twenty hours of soft skills work readiness training to every single participant so they're able to learn about communication, teamwork, all the things that you don't really learn when you have never had a job before. So we, Sergeant Florence from the Gang Unit did reach out and he came to the Career Center and I was able to give him a really in-depth program description for all of our programming so he's taken that and been able, when he encounters young people in the community who are either at risk or proven risk, he's able to give them the option of coming to the Career Center. And since he has come and learned about our programming, we've seen about a three-hundred percent increase in young people coming into the Career Center. So, previous to our interaction together, we were seeing about two young people per group of forty-five and now we're seeing eight to ten per group of forty-five. So, because we do, the Career Center services all ages, but the Young Adult Department in particular goes to twenty-four. So, we did see a very large increase and Sergeant Florence has been great with communicating with me, making sure that if he's referring people over, they are coming to us. So we have a really good line of open communication and we've also been able to set that up with the school resource officers within the high schools as well.
When you speak of school resource officer, you mean the high school?
Yes, the high schools.
Also, I recognize Counselor Rodney Elliot earlier, he just came back into the room, so Counselor Rodney Elliot is here. Linda, you have anything to add from UTEC?
I've been here four months.
Been here four months?
Yeah, four months now, this month, and I love what I do there, it's totally something different from the field I'm used to, but loving to get to know these young adults and chipping away with them and getting them off the streets, especially doing reentry, what I mainly do, like when I do my jail visits. It's amazing to see them come back out and do all these amazing things and get their lives better. So it's just, UTEC's an amazing place to see them grow and change lives.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also want to recognize the chief program officers for UTEC, Michelle Sandler, back there, thank you for coming, Ms. Sandler. Counselor Malonazo, any question?
I don't have any question, I just have a comment, I didn't realize that the Career Center was involved as they are, so that's very exciting. You talk about, you know, putting idle hands to work, I think that's very important, like you said, Superintendent, that it's important to keep the young people busy and if they can do that during the summertime and actually build relationships, not only from the standpoint of what they may like to do in the future, but also build camaraderie and friendships and have lifelong, you know, relationships, so I think that's a terrific, terrific program as well. So, thank you.
I think, I think the good part, I just want to echo what you said, that the great part about the Career Center, I learned too, for the first time, that they serve young people and not just, they not just house the Career Center on Merrimack Street, they send their staff to the Volk, CTI, and there's another place.
The Lowell Career Academy?
Lowell Career Academy, to work with those young people in term of you have opportunity for finding a job, get GED and then this, this, this kind of collaboration, seriously, it is a great thing to combating these issues of gang, gang prevention, you know, so I'm pretty thrilled to hear that.
Counselor Leahy, anything else to add, sir?
I just think it's great, the partnership that you developed, you know, since you got in office and thank you for coming. UTEC always does a great job, it's always good to meet the new leaders that come up over the years and it's great to see that your office is involved, so I think it's gelling well. Thank you.
So, chief, how does, let's say, you mentioned Lowell Community Health Centers, YMCA and CMA, what, what contribution they give to the, the unit, the Gang Task Force, because they too, you get some of the Shannon Grant from you?
Right, I know in particular that the CMMA, they run almost like a summer camp on their own for the younger kids, you know, keep them busy during the summer. I know Lowell Community Health obviously has the teen block, which is, we're actually meeting with tomorrow. We have monthly either coffee with cops with them or pizza with cops, nachos, whatever, and it's an opportunity for our Gang Unit and also our other offices, because I want all our officers to be in the same mindset. And we have a group over there now that has met with them two or three times and they play board games, they just break down the walls and try to increase the communication so when they see each other on the street, they know each other, it's not, oh, there's the cops, you know, it's, so that's what I'm trying to aim for, to build those relationships between the officers and the, the young people of the city. And I think it's important too, looking down the road, and I've talked about this the last time I was here, is that they very well could be, they are the future of this city and I very much want them to be part of this police department. I think it's important that the police department reflect the community and these individuals, hopefully they'll, they'll see us in a positive light and see that they are just humans. Most of the kids that are, are in this particular group right now are all Lowell residents, you know, this academy class we have coming in, mostly all Lowell residents, the last academy class, you know, single family homes they came from, did dwell in the city, these are the kind of individuals that I want to see police this city, that know it and understand it and I think this is another way to build that. And the same thing with our relationship with the Boys Club, with Corey Rudy over there, that's going very well, I met with Joe Hunger today on a separate issue, but Joe seemed to be very happy with the way things are going with Corey, which I knew would be, he would work well, another, you know, a Lowell kid that grew up in the Acre and is involved in sports and as we talked about, he actually sent me a pamphlet today, it's the Lowell Activity Program, we talked about the activities, we want to try to get some of the kids involved in things that they're interested in. I don't want kids going to the Boys Club and say, oh, I don't play basketball, so I'm not going to hang around here. The Boys Club and the Girls' Club do a great job of providing things that they're interested in and we want to be able to do the same. I think we're just very fortunate, I, you know, I, I give the governor a lot of credit to be able to have this money for us every year, I think it cuts down on a lot of the crime in this city. I mean, we still go out, we do our enforcement efforts, we try to be fair as possible with that, I talked about this when I first got the job, that I was a little concerned about the field interview cards, what kind of message that was sending in these neighborhoods, so I've asked that the officers keep them in check as far as I wanted to see quality instead of quantity. I used to see when I was the deputy superintendent, I'd sit there at Comstat when Superintendent Taylor was in charge and I wouldn't say it was turning into a contest, but there was a lot of pressure on the command level people to keep those numbers up and I was just afraid that that would have the reverse effect, that that would basically turn our young against us in a way, so the numbers have dropped. We want to turn that maybe two weeks, we make sure, I sit down with crime analysis and I said, are we getting the information that we need and not just, I mean, just stopping people for the heck of it, that's not the way to run business. And so we judiciously go through these neighborhoods in, in, in police and I think that, just this year alone, since the beginning of the year, they, they're still doing the hard work, they recovered four guns off the street already this year, the FI cards are still up there, there's probably been two hundred and twenty-one written just by the Gang Unit, three hundred fifteen by patrol, a hundred and forty-nine by the dis response officers. And again, the women in crime analysis go, no, these are the people that we need to know where they are and what they're doing and so I'm happy with that and I'm happy with the relationship. And we continue the relationship, we keep working together. I consider myself very fortunate to come in to this job and have all you help me, I really do appreciate that, it means a lot to me and we just continue to march.
You, you mentioned that there's also other law enforcement partnership in this as well, other than, you know, your department, who are, who are those organizations or law enforcement?
Well, obviously, you know, I've had discussions with the Massachusetts State Police, they were willing to come in and help us, they were, you know, they were on standby all the time, but I, I kind of stepped back from that a little bit, I do have, you know, the person, one of the people that runs the state police now is obviously a Lowell person, Lieutenant Colonel Quinn and they gave it to Colonel Gilpin and told me at the last meeting, I was with her at Esper, that whatever we need up here in Lowell, that's what we're going to get. But as it stands now, I, I think that I'm just going to let our own officers kind of be involved in it because they know the city kids and I feel more comfortable having them do it, but I know if something major had happened and I needed more boots on the ground, that would be just a phone call away. Our other partners here, obviously besides the people in this room, are our federal partners and we've had this discussion before, but, you know, the FBI, the DEA, they're involved, the US Attorney General's Office, they, they're willing to take some of these bigger cases that come down the pipe for us and take it federally, so that's something that we're working on. You know, if we find someone in the city that's causing a lot of violence or dealing a lot of drugs, we've already done it with a drug dealer on Back Central Street, we did a case on him with the state police in our drug unit and that case is going federally and that particular individual who was selling fentanyl in the city is looking at thirty years, so it's not going to be a state sentence. So I, I think that the message needs to be sent out there, that this is a tool that we're going to be using, that I'm going to be using, to send a clear message that all this works, but if you're, you're breaking the law, there's going to be a price to pay for it.
How often you meet here for the group, the task force? Do you meet at all, the task force?
With this particular group here?
Yeah, your, your group here with, you know.
I know that the Gang Unit meets with them, I meet with the Gang Unit probably maybe once a month also, I meet with UTEC, but I don't really meet with, I mean, I've been to teen block, obviously, I've gone and had, you know, coffee with the cops, I've gone near the Lowell Boys and Girls Club, I've had a relationship, I was on the board of directors prior to being the superintendent, I had to step down, so I've had a long relationship with them. CMMA, I don't really meet with them, but I usually see them at some of the events that we all attend and we have discussions there, so I think the communication's there, I feel comfortable with it.
So, so the Gang Task, the Gang Unit or the Gang, would meet once a month maybe with, say, the social service agencies like UTEC or like Career Centers and so on or?
I believe, yeah, I, I mean, I actually asked Bill Florence to not to be a stranger at UTEC and I know they've been over there a couple of times already because I want that relationship also to be built between the officers and the street workers, I want them to all know each other. And there's been discussions, you know, of when they're in the neighborhood, going the other way and having the UTEC people stop into the precincts, whether it's on Bridge Street, Middlesex Street, we're back in the Acre, we're back on Broadway Street, so any one of those precincts over there, so they get, they get to see, you know, to know each other's faces basically and know that they're all on the same page. But, yeah, I would, I would say that definitely UTEC I meet with once a month and I meet with the Gang Unit. I see them at Comstat anyway, bi-weekly at our Comstat meetings, but then there'll also be separate meetings. A lot of phone calls, especially as of recent, but.
Counselor, any other question? No, just one of the things that I'm very interested in asking individual from UTEC with the jail, the jail visit, right? The jail visit, how often you go meet, visit someone in the jail and, and, and do you get permission from the sheriff or how's the relationship with the UTEC and the Sheriff Office? Mal, can you comment on that?
Sure, Counselor, very fortunate, we got great collaboration with the sheriff, sheriffs for the Middlesex County, the Exeter County, we're also the only other two agency in Massachusetts that's actually can go upstate, the DOC, if we find out that any young brothers and sisters who's actually out there, that who is in our age area, we, we just call our contact, like, can we visit him, you know, or her? And then we definitely have great. great collaboration throughout the years, you know. And same thing that we do out here. We, you know, actually going in there, in reach, and we do focus group, we do circles, you know, discussion group. And everything's all about reentry, meaning, you know, we set them up. When they come out, we want to prepare you that you do have some resource. We do have connection. You do have somebody that care for you, and you're not going to be alone. We're going to support you. We're going to be your bridge to all the resources and to catch your goals. Whatever you need, we're going to be there for you. And it's all, like I said, love that word, key is relationship building. Everything's all about that, you know.
So this is all like a reentry kind of program, right, for, for, for the young people that being incarcerated?
Yes.
So what you do, you meet with them, and then you follow up with, with them in terms of resources and whatnot?
Sure. So we go there, like, we have a team of five at this time. And so we go there five times a week. So different facility, different counties, and we're all split up. And it's also including DYS from different facility, too. So we're out there, too. And everything's all, we're going in there, we already have curriculum, agenda, you know, what we're going to say that week, you know. And it's all relationship building, you know, sometime we joking around, sometime it's serious, you know. Could be a topic like, you know, how does it feel to have one less enemy, you know, and then make them think. And then everything's all, you know, intentionally. And once they're out, we'll be the first one to pick them up if they need rise. And if they need clothing, you know, I mean, because sometime a lot of those brothers and sisters, once they got arrested, or they doing their time in their, like, box in summer. And then when they get out in the winter, we got their jackets and clothes ready for them, you know. Very fortunately, our boss is kind enough, like, kind of hook us up, right? So, yeah. So our young adult, when they get out, they will get all that. And then through our program, you know, I just want to add a little bit more our programs, you know, I mean, they also, not just the street worker, which is the outreach team, we're like the frontline. And then it's one, we got them into our program, they also provide a service of transitional coach. And we do not like, use the word case management. It's a transitional coach of a mentor, meaning whatever they need, you know, I mean, to their goals, we have awesome board. Whatever they achieve, no, could have been a license, could have been served safe, could have been like any OSHA and all that. If they accomplish all that, too, they also get a reward, lunch, certain thing. Like I say, food is the best for us.
That's very good.
Yeah. So that's just some of the stuff that we do, you know.
Joining us, we have Counselor Rita Mousia. Thank you, Counselor Mousia. Counselor Elliott, any?
Just briefly, I know we're wrapping up the meeting, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. I think, I think the relationships over the, certainly the time that I've been here and the collaboration and partnerships that you all mentioned, spoke about are an important component of, of addressing crime, but also creating future for individuals that might not have had that opportunity. I guess my question is, so thank you. My question to you, Chief, is, there was an editorial in the paper today. I thought it was very well-written. And it references collaboration with U.S. Attorney Andrew Lelling, which was, which, which I thought was important, but what a concern was, and whether it was the editorial or his comments, was that the Attorney's Office and the large drug bust that you have done, and I commend you and your staff in collaboration with Lawrence Police Chief Roy, since he routinely seems to work with local state law enforcement, how can we, as a governing body, engage the U.S. Attorney if that is just one, you know, one, one partner to, to call more attention? I know it's resources, because I do think it's important. I don't think that we can just fight it on the local level. And I think that we are doing everything we possibly can. You're using every resource. We've expanded our vice unit. We've expanded our gang unit. But it seems that, to some degree, I don't want to say our hands are tied, but local communities are struggling, almost paddling upstream with, with this epidemic and getting the, you know, getting the national resources that we need to, you know, to stem the tide of the fentanyl coming from China and Mexico. I presume you attend, you know, does men like talk about this and putting together? How can we call more attention to Congress to say, guess what, you've given us some resources. We appreciate the Shannon Grants, which is part of the education and outreach, and you're doing local enforcement. But I think we're falling, you know, communities are falling short of really becoming aggressive and, and taking a big chunk out of this. I know that was a long-winded question, but, you know, what, what do you feel we can do? What support? And what are the chiefs in the Merrimack Valley? Is there, is a concerted effort to get more, you know, more effort DEA, FBI, resources?
Well, I, I did attend a meeting with the area chiefs and Methuen Congresswoman Trahan had a meeting. There was all kinds of partners at that meeting, you know, the mental health people, the police, prosecutors, the whole nine yards. And, I mean, we're not going to arrest our way out of the situation. That was clear, everybody knows that. We're not going to arrest our way out. You know, they'll provide more treatment. But if, the question is more geared towards, you know, how do we stop these drugs from coming into the country? Obviously, you know, for the money you spend on war, this is basically a war. This is basically, we need to stop this, these drugs from coming to the country. So we almost need Congress to, I, in my opinion, spend more money, you know, come up with some mandatory sentences, you know, make it so it's, there's going to be an answer. You know, if you, if you commit a crime, you're going to have to pay dearly for it. And, but the biggest thing is to try to stop it at, at the borders. It seems to me that we do well at that for a while. And then from what I'm hearing now, it's very easy to get things into the country right now. And I think that's probably where we need to invest into that, into a little bit more border security. But the thing is, every time we find a way to stop something, because there's so much money involved, they find a way. But I think that, I think that everybody across the country knows that this is a major problem for us right now. And, you know, on a local level, I, I think that the federal, the feds have been very good to us as far as, I mean, we have people assigned to the DEA. We have a detective assigned there. We have a detective assigned to the FBI. Obviously, Tom Daley's been there for many, many years. And that's how I got the connection with Mr. Yelling. And he came into my office and, you know, promised to do whatever we needed here in Lowell. And he's already proven that, you know, without a lot of fanfare or not a lot of, you know, knocking on doors and begging for help. As soon as we went to him, he stuck by his word. And I think that once the word gets out in the street that you're not going, going to be going down to Lowell District Court, or you're not going to be going to Superior Court, you're going down to Boston, you're going to federal court. That's, that's very intimidating. And I, I think that that could have, that could help us. And, you know, even having a detective assigned, another detective we have assigned, a sergeant, actually, to a DEA forfeiture task force unit has been a home run for us over the years, because much of the money we use to buy things for the police department that normally would be paid for by the taxpayers, is paid for by the drug dealers themselves. So every time there's a forfeiture in Massachusetts, because this particular sergeant is assigned to a DEA forfeiture task force unit from Lowell, Lowell gets a piece of that money. And as you all know, we've been doing this for quite some time. Ed Davis started this, and it's been very helpful for us. I think it saved the taxpayers a lot of money. So I, I think that, you know, I know it was a long-winded question, it's kind of getting to be a long-winded answer. But I think that whatever we can do. But I have a feeling, I know Congresswoman Trahan did a great job the other day down in Methuen, and listened to all the partners and what they had to say. And it's going to come down to money, you know, treatment, a lot of money for treatment, more beds, you know, more money towards, you know, stopping the flow of drugs from coming into this country. And in my opinion, singling out the people that are causing the most damage and sending a clear message that there's going to be a price to pay.
Thanks.
I think that in itself is significant. So I think it's, I think you're right. I think Massachusetts has been a leader on the opioid crisis with good cause, because we have, we have, we have a major problem here. So I appreciate that. And, you know, I think we have to engage our U.S. Senators and the delegation of Massachusetts, the Houses. I think we have a chance in the House now to put forward some stuff. So thank you. I'll, I'll stop here. That's exactly the explanation that I wanted. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott. Counselor Rita Mousia, have anything to add?
I don't really have a question, because I just came in to the meeting. But I just want to say, UTECH, you're just so wonderful. You save lives. You go to the jail, to the Bill Ricker House of Correction. I've seen you there on a number of occasions. It's just amazing the work that you do there. All the people there, you save lives, you provide training for people. It's just amazing, all the work that you do. And so it's a great that you're here today. I, I don't know what the conversation was about, but I just had to say that, because I believe that. You do a great job. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor. Without the collaboration of our community, I don't think we're not a success, too, Rita. So I thanks all for the collaboration, and thank you for everybody's support, UTECH. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to adjourn the meeting before we do. I want to thank the chief and all the partners for their great work. This is, this is what's good about Lowell, the partnership that we have with all the, you know, agency, social service agency, as well as law enforcement. And you have it in the chief. And so I hope that this continue, this relationship is continued to build for the good of our community. So that said, I want to motion, a motion to accept this report, report of progress.
So move. Good, good progress.
Great, great progress. Thank you, Chief. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, move. Mr. Chair, can I ask Chief just one more?
Sure, go ahead.
Just to follow up, Chief, in that, at that meeting in the, at the Methuen, in Methuen, the Chief of Police, were there any, you know, suggestions for municipalities, at least in the Merrimack Valley, putting together, I don't know, letters or communication to various, I know there's only one member of Congress, but seems like sometimes a squeaky wheel gets the grease. And if we get local municipal officials to start, you know, to start communicating with, I guess with everyone, even including outside of the, outside of the Merrimack Valley. Just, I don't want to feel helpless and say, this is great moving forward. What else do we, what else, you know, any takeaways then from, from that meeting, saying, look, contact your local officials, contact your state officials, contact the governor, you know, even the governor, go into the Governors Association. How do, how do we get the federal government?
I think that, I know that Congresswoman Trahan did a great job taking a lot of notes. I know her staff, Emily, all the people that worked for the Congresswoman were taking notes, they were very engaged with the crowd. And that was kind of the message that she was going to bring back there, that she was going to bring back, that she realizes, and everybody in that room, and it was quite a few people in that room, realized that this is, this is going to come down to money. This is going to come down to a full court press by everyone involved, us sitting here in the city, you know, our delegation, state delegation, our Congresswoman, our U.S. Senators. This, this needs to go across the board across the country. And I think that whatever message we can send, you know, contact the Congresswoman's office and see if it would be good to, you know, get letters from the counselors and, you know, even, even neighborhood groups. I mean, this, this, this crisis that's going on now is affecting everybody. And, you know, we've lost a lot of people in this city because of it. And is, I don't see it getting better unless we all pull together and roll in the same direction. But again, it's, it's money.
Agreed.
And it's priorities, and that's what has to happen.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott. The other things, too, is that the council or subcommittee can make a recommendation, but although this meeting is on gang task force, but it's related. The opium epidemic is in, in this city, in this Commonwealth, in this country, related to everything that's going on in gang, or, or, so therefore, subcommittee can, you know, if you, you like to, then have a motions to present these recommendations, these motions to the full council, and to have the council do a letter to the state delegation, or in this case, is Councilwoman Lord Trahan, and who are, I think, is a great idea.
Yeah, I say, I just happen to think that if we get the mayors from these larger communities, and it doesn't have to be just strictly confined to the Merrimack Valley, because we know that it has no bounds. But I think we've got to start generating some momentum at some level. And how do we do that? By sending messages. Believe it or not, people, you know, people start getting a lot of letters, calling attention, this is, it's a Washington problem. It needs to be, resources need to be focused down there. And I don't want to sound redundant, but I do think, I do think it makes sense where, you know, need to get political, if you will, to get political resources in this state and in this valley.
You, you're totally right on that. Yep. So do you hear motion to adjourn?
No, again, if you want, like a motion to prepare a communication from the full council, either through a resolution or a letter from the mayor and the members of the council to do just what Counselor Elliott's talking about.
Would you like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, yes.
Layhi seconded. So roll call.
Chairman, Chairman move?
Yes.
Counselor Layhi?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. So move. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you all very much.